All right.
We'll now call this meeting of the Helena City Commission to order.
City Attorney Jordan. City Manager Harlow Schalk.
Here.
Commissioner Fever.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean.
Here.
For the record, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Collins is excused this evening.
Thank you. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena's City Commission meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's efforts to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary during the meeting. Please read the following tips and guidelines for app usage and your participation. And if you'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have been sent to administrative meeting minutes, first for January 5th, 2022, and second for January 19th, 2022. Are there any changes to the administrative meeting minutes on either of those dates? If not, the minutes will be approved as submitted. Okay, next on the agenda, we have presentations, approved confirmations of Officer Jordan Cedar and Officer Spencer Harris. First, City Manager Harlow Shock, will you introduce interim Chief Brett Petty to present their new officers?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, and welcome interim chief Petty to come forward and request your approval of the confirmation of two officers this evening who are making it through the probation period and by MCA 732-411. After such probation is over, the city can then incorporate them as officers of peace within our City of Helena. So it's yours, chief.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor Pro Town, City Commissioners, thank you for having us. City Manager went ahead and gave away my speech, so I don't have much more to say. No, I'm kidding. Tonight I have two officers that have successfully completed their one-year probationary period with the Helena Police Department. At the end of the probationary period and under Montana state law, the appointment of the officer must be submitted to the City Commission. And if the appointment is confirmed by the City Commission, then the officer becomes a member of our police force. With this said, I'm seeking a vote from the Commission to confirm these two officers tonight. And prior to having the Commission vote on the officer's confirmation, and if I may, with your permission, I'd like to introduce these two officers and give a brief bio of who they are and where they come from.
Please.
Spencer and Jordan, you want to come up here? I'll just read their bios here that they gave me. Officer Jordan Cedar here was born and raised in Billings, Montana. He graduated from the University of Montana. I think that says Go Cats. Wildlife Biology. After graduation, he moved back to Billings, began his career with the Elston County Sheriff's Department, where he eventually became the Animal Control Officer. Soon after, he met his fiancee, who moved to Helena for a new career. After five years with the Elston County, he accepted a position with the Helena Police Department. Officer Cedar could not be more grateful of what he has grown to be today and looks forward to seeing where his career takes him with the Helena Police Department. Next, Officer Spencer Harris. Officer Spencer Harris grew up in Hendersonville, Tennessee with his parents, Lee and Clint. Spencer graduated from Hendersonville High School in 1997 and joined the Marine Corps where he served until 2005. After serving in the Marines, Spencer joined the Metro Nashville Police Department in 2005. Spencer worked for the Nashville Police Department for 16 years and left as a head canine trader. He is honored to be working for the City of Helena and looking forward to serving the Helena community. With that, I'd like to welcome personally Officer Cedar and Officer Harris to the HPD family. And if you don't mind, could I have them speak?
Absolutely.
Okay, go for it. Looking for life.
It's crazy to think that it's already been over a year now since I've been working with the Helena Police Department and I couldn't be more thankful for opportunities they've given me and I also want to thank my fiancee back there for helping me and helping me through getting the job, pushing me to get into the career and I look forward to where it takes me. Thank you.
Pretty much the same thing. I wanted to thank the citizens and the community for a warm welcome to the state of Montana as I moved here. This is a wonderful place and Helena is my home now. And just wanted to thank everybody and I look forward to protecting and serving the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
With the introductions of these officers, I'd like to ask Mayor Pro Tem and the Commission, if these two officers are, sorry, I would ask for the Commission to move to approve the confirmation of these two officers tonight.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Please.
I would have moved to approve confirmations of Officer Jordan Cedar and Officer Spencer Harris.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any Commission discussion before we take the roll call?
If I may. Thank you. Gentlemen, I'd just like to say thanks for stepping forward and serving in this role. It's a very difficult one and and a very necessary role in our society and it's, I appreciate, appreciate your willingness to do that. I don't know if the two of you know, but I spend a little time in public safety and work along with HPD quite a bit and and I guess having had that experience, I might offer you just a little bit of advice that I don't know whether it'll make any sense now or maybe someday, but one of the things that I found that learned a lot through that experience and and one of the things that I learned through that time was an idea that was presented to me by a chief officer, probably midway through my career. And it was a pretty simple idea of and you have a chain of command that obviously you work through as, as we did in the fire service, but they put to me this way. Something doesn't seem right. Say it. Whether it's up or whether it's down. And you know, maybe just take that away from this evening. So that'd be, but again, appreciate your, your willingness to serve here and wish you the best of luck.
Mayor Pro Tem, if I may.
Sure, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. Just briefly, formally, welcome to the community and thank you very much for your service. I look forward to meeting you both soon. Thank you.
Well, let me add my congratulations to you both for finishing your probation period and now you're on your way to hopefully a long career in the Helena Police Department. We're a few officers short, as you well know, and I'm sure it's this Commission's intention to see that we build the force back up to where our budget permits. And it isn't there now, so we obviously have the wherewithal to make a go of it. I want to thank you for your service to our community. Very grateful.
Let's wrap up. Thank you for being willing to call Helena home and join the City of Helena. Very excited to have you as permanent members of the Helena Police Department and congratulations. With that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fever.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, we will now move on to board appointments. I would like to note the memo in the agenda packet is complete. However, the title on the agenda, agenda title sheet is missing two committees, Commission committees, but we will go through those as they are listed in the memo in the packet. First, we are, I've been recommending the following board appointments. An interim appointment of Lindsay Gilstrap to the Helena Open Lands Management Advisory Committee. Interim term will begin upon appointment and expire on June 30th, 2023. An interim appointment of Laura Langdon of Helena Public Arts Committee as a member at large. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on December 31st, 2023. Appointment of John Iverson to a first term on the Railroad Tiff Advisory Board as a business owner representative within the district. Non-expiring term will begin upon appointment. City Commission Ad-Hoc Committee, the appointment of Commissioner Emily Dean and Commissioner Melinda Reed. And Solid Waste Steering Committee, City Commission Representative, Commissioner Sean Logan. Is there any discussion on the appointments as recommended? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Pearl Tim.
Commissioner Logan.
I would move to accept the following board appointments. To the Helena Open Lands Management Advisory Committee, an interim appointment of Lindsay Gilstrap to the Helena Open Lands Advisory Committee. Interim term will begin upon appointment and expire on June 30th, 2023. An interim appointment of Laura Langdon to the Helena Public Art Committee as a member at large. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on December 31st, 2023. The appointment of John Iverson to a first term on the Railroad Tiff Advisory Board as a business owner, representative within the district. Non-expiring term will begin upon appointment. To the City Commission Ad-Hoc Committee, the appointments of Commissioner Emily Dean and Commissioner Melinda Reed. To the Solid Waste Steering Committee, City Commission Representative, Commissioner Sean Logan. The interim appointees can reapply for full terms following the completion of the interim appointment.
Second. Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Any additional discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fever.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
We will now move on to the consent agenda. City Manager Harlow Shock, will you please present the consent agenda?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Dean. I recommend you entertain a motion of consent to approve items A, B, and C. Those items include claims in the total amount of $2,619,562.22 for claims paid December 20th, 2021 through January 14th, 2022, for checks numbered consecutively 1-85775 through 1-86205, as well as the item for the city manager to, an approval to enter into an interagency agreement, master agreement with the Regional Airport Authority for activities on the airport site by the City of Helena. And last, approval to see grant funding from the state of Montana for a drug detection canine for the police department. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, City Manager Harlow Shock. Is there any Commission discussion on the consent agenda or any of the items? Okay, with that, we will open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda?
Mayor Pro Tem. I see no hands raised at this time online. I have no written public comment. I see no one in chambers that would like to make public comment on the consent agenda.
Thank you to Madam City Clerk. If there's no additional discussion from the Commissioners, I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda items A, B, and C.
Mayor Pro Tem.
City Commissioner Reed.
I move to approve the consent agenda items A, B, and C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Saying it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Not, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fever.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
We will now move to communications and proposals from the Commissioners. Before we entertain some of the other comments of Commissioners, I would like to note that tonight is City Attorney Jordan's last regular committee, Commission meeting. And the mayor very much wished that he could be here. And so he instead recorded a video, which we will now share before the rest of us get our chance to say our few words.
On behalf of the City of Helena, the City Commission, and myself, we thank you for all that you've done the past 16 years for this city. Your work was impeccable, second to none. And I know I'm putting a challenge on whoever else comes after you, but I want you to know you will be blessed. We enjoy working with you and I sincerely wish you well in your future endeavors and anything else you wish to do. Thank you. Godspeed.
Is there any other comments from other Commissioners?
Well, I'm the only.
Sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Fever.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. It's, it's nice hearing your voice, so that's a good thing. I'm the newest person here along with, well, even newer than Commissioner Reed because she was the interim City Manager for a bit and I did not serve in any position in the city. I only just got to know you, Thomas, and now you're leaving. I find that annoying, but I do value what service you have already provided in my short tenure on this Commission. And I am looking forward to your work at the Montana League of Cities and Towns. I think that they scored big when they employed you. So congratulations with that new job of yours and go for it.
Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I just want to say thank you to the City Attorney. Thank you for your steady hand, your wisdom, your perspective, and most of all, your service to the city. I would not have made it without your wisdom and steady hand during my tenure as the interim City Manager. I'm grateful for everything you have done for the staff and for the city, and I wish you the best of luck in the future. Thank you.
Commissioner Logan.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Jordan, I was bummed, as I'm sure we all were, that the day I got the call from you saying you're, you're leaving us, but of course, at the same time, very happy for the opportunity that you have now before you and I'm certain you will excel in that position every bit as much as you did in your positions as Deputy City Attorney and City Attorney. As, as each of my colleagues have said, you have provided us very professional, thorough and very calm service throughout your tenure. That was, you know, clear while I was an employee, very clear as during my time on the Commission and, and we've had an interesting couple of years. So I'd like to thank you very much for that service and wish you the best of luck. And I know as others have said, you know, you're not going too far. And we will have your expertise still. But my best to you and your family. Thank you.
Well, I think Commissioner Logan summed it up well. My sentiments, I'm bummed. But I am very, very excited for the new role that you're going to be taking on as Deputy Director at the League of Cities and Towns. I think we've been very fortunate to have your guidance, the city as a whole, for over the last 15 years, and now the state will get to experience that. I know that I absolutely would not have made it through my first two years on the Commission without your guidance. I think what's even if for anybody who, who meets Thomas knows that he has kind of a dry sense of humor, but also us talking about him like this is making him extremely uncomfortable. And he's not loving it. All the more reason that we should continue to celebrate him though. Truly, this Helena would not be what it is today without your guidance and I mean, I think we can see the growth of the city as an organization right along as your growth is the City Attorney and very, very grateful for that. We know where to find you still and how to get ahold of you, but I truly hope you know how much you mean to all of us and we're just indebted to you.
If I may, Mayor Pro Tem.
Absolutely.
Thank you all very much. Thank you to the citizens of Helena and all of my fellow employees, my family, my city family, as I remember it many years ago. You are correct. It's very uncomfortable. I don't take adulation and heaping praise very well, but I will do my best. I want to thank Tim Burton for hiring me in 2006, fresh out of law school, only knowing land use stuff, or rather thinking I knew land use law and then learning actually about how it really works in the real world over 15 years. And then City Manager Ron Alice for hiring me as the City Attorney seven years ago. And giving me the opportunity to learn from the city family, all of the directors and city managers that I have served with, the city Commissioners, and just the wonderful citizens of Helena who have taken me in as a son of this city. Special thanks to my friends who encouraged me to apply for the City Attorney position, maybe encourages a light word. Because I think at the time I doubted my ability to take the job on and they were right in my ability to actually do so. And then finally, I wanted to thank my wife Talia and my kids, Mahala Marie Margaret and I A S Adana Jean for supporting me over the last 15 years. It has not been an easy decision to leave. But it is time for me to assist the other cities and towns in Montana and build and continue building the league into a powerful force for the cities and towns of Montana. And I will be forever grateful for the opportunity to learn and grow here at the city.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes.
I just have one final question for Thomas. Is there any way you can leave that little running statue?
Yes, Mayor Pro Town, Commissioner Logan, I can leave it, but only with safe hands because of its inappropriateness for public observation.
Just curious. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim, I don't know of this statue, so I guess it's because I haven't been around long enough, but anyway, if it's inappropriate for public view, maybe it shouldn't even be around.
I will share Mayor Pro Tim for, because anybody who comes in my office notices it. So long ago, I think many people know I'm a runner. I used to run more than I do now. And I was given a series of runners, starting in the the blocks position, running and then winning. And when I was in the Deputy City Attorney Office, I had them on the window sill. And we get wind from time to time and the wind, nobody believes me, by the way. The wind blew the middle one down, the one that's in full stride with his hand up. And it landed on the ground and broke all of his fingers off except for his middle finger. So he runs with his middle finger up now.
That's a great story. I think you should tell that often and maybe I'm certainly appreciative of it. I was a runner at one time myself and ran competitively as you did for quite a number of years. We're in a different generation of runners here, so you would have beat me anyway. It wouldn't matter. I just want to get back to your new job on the League of Cities and Towns. Frankly, we need the league now more than ever. And that's from my own reflections on where the legislature has been over the last decades or so about how it would, if you will, basically direct almost all the traffic in our cities and towns. And I think the league is an extraordinary organization that needs to explain to this coming legislature that maybe a little less is better than more. And we can do our, we can do it ourselves. And I'm looking forward to you maybe sending that message and personally delivering it to the next legislature.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. We'll continue with communication proposals from Commissioners. Are there additional communications or proposals from Commissioners?
Mayor Pro Tim, I have one. I, first, I want to personally thank the county for putting forth a referendum on the marijuana tax that will go forward in June in the primary. And it would be a 3% tax as permitted by law if the voters approve on recreational marijuana and on medical marijuana. I believe the, the City Commission, like back in September, said it supported that, but the City Commission didn't actually take a vote on that support. And I think it would be useful if the City Commission did in fact affirm its support for the county's referendum by resolution. And so I'm urging that at our next city admin meeting, which I think is February 23, that we consider a resolution, a staff-prepared resolution that would affirm the City Commission's support for the county-wide voter referendum on the marijuana tax, both the recreational tax and the medical use tax.
Is there additional Commission discussion on Commissioner Fever's proposal?
Mayor Pro Tim.
Commissioner Logan.
Thank you, Commissioner Fever. I'd be happy to support such a resolution. I think one of the the recreational, I gotta be honest, the recreational marijuana vote was, was one that surprised me last fall. One of the, one of the rationale for moving that forward was that the tax revenue that, that could be gained by local governments from that. And so I certainly see that as a benefit to the county and others in, in you know, in that initiative. So thank you for bringing that up.
Mayor Pro Tim, I'm grateful for Commissioner Logan's comments. I left out a part of my hope for our administrative meeting on the 23rd. I'd like to hear from staff how it would propose to expend what revenue we do achieve from the, our allocation as a city from the marijuana tax. And I know it's right now an unknown as to what that would be, but at least we could designate what the targets would be that we have in mind that would be of useful to the city, targets that might not be met out of our general fund normally. And so that would be where I would go with that. Thank you.
So additional commission discussion? I would just, I'm supportive of bringing this forward first to an administrative meeting and then to a regular commission meeting for a formal vote. I think this is something that we, obviously I don't want the county to miss out on and happy to voice our support through a formal vote in short order. City Manager Haloshock, is, are there other items that you need information on beyond our support for moving this forward?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I will, I was just looking at the deadlines. I will let you know that there is a schedule that does require, especially since this would be a drafted resolution and we would want to have it in front of you to make sure that we get it correct. So we would want to make sure we have plenty of time and I do have a new vacancy in my city attorney's office. So I want to make sure, provide enough time. Excuse me. So I will add it, excuse me, as soon as possible. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, that would not preclude though a discussion at administrative meeting. Would it, City Manager?
Thank you, Commissioner Fever. No, it would not preclude, but it would not. Our, our next meeting is next Wednesday and it is already a set agenda. So I know that we would be required to complete an appropriate amount of information and analysis for you. And I would not want to expedite that at the expense of timing. So I don't know that there's a large problem. You had asked for an additional consideration on the budget side and an analysis. So I want to make sure that we capture that appropriately for you all, but know that that will also have more conversations and the next joint city and county commission meeting. This item is also on the agenda. So whatever is discussed at either one of those, whichever one is first, that would help inform a final resolution for adoption and support for that item on the ballot.
Does that answer your question?
Thank you. City Manager, my only concern is that this is on a vote in June. And so it isn't that we have a lot of time to consider something we already support and that the county has already adopted. And so I don't want to delay it into unnecessarily down the road. And I appreciate that Thomas is now leaving and so you have to find some assistance there in that office and I appreciate that. And it is, the commission is already on record supporting it. I just think memorializing it in a resolution is, is important for the citizens of Helena that they aren't just thinking that, well, maybe they did and maybe they didn't. And so I think that's useful and it also again supports, shows our support for what the county commissioners have, have done, which I think is, is a good thing, taking advantage of what, well, getting back to my area guard comment to to our city attorney about the legislature. The legislature doesn't give us a lot of opportunities to expand our revenue options. And so we should really take advantage of this one and show our conviction thereof. Thank you.
Manager Haloshock, would it be possible on during your city manager's update at the next administrative meeting that you could provide us the meeting date in which we could have a first pass of a resolution on a regular meeting agenda?
Mayor Protem, absolutely.
Additional communications or proposals from commissioners?
Mayor Protem?
Commissioner Logan?
Thank you. What seems like a long time ago on a galaxy far, far away. I think it was actually August of 2020 or September. I brought forward an idea that I think is commonly referred to as a sewer and water insurance program that is, I guess ideally is a, an insurance policy that could cover catastrophic failure of laterals from the main to a house. And there were some commission discussion, but I, you know, it didn't go very far. And I guess I would like to see if there's interest in the commission to maybe possibly revisit that at a future meeting.
There are other commission comments?
Mayor Protem, this, I support Commissioner Logan's idea of considering further how we might ensure the lateral links from house to main sewer and water. I think that is an issue here in town. And when somebody sees their whole yard dug up and right out to the street and they're wondering, how do I pay for this? Really? How do I pay for this? And there may be a way that we can do that more easily than the low interest loans we have now. And so I think we ought to pursue it. And I do know that there is more than one option and that in fact, again, city attorney, the League of Cities and Towns actually has its own insurance plan in this regard. And so I think we might be able to even shop locally on this, which would be a good thing. And so I hope that we will be considering this very in short order.
Is there any additional commission discussion?
I'm there Protem.
Commissioner Reed?
I have no objection to adding this to a future agenda for further discussion. Thank you.
I'm looking forward to having this on a future agenda. We did talk about it probably over a year ago at this point, maybe early last year. I, from what I recall, we were going to get some information back of what potential routes or options might look like. And I think that having an opportunity to discuss Commissioner Logan's proposal and, and what options are available to the commission would be helpful. City Manager Haloshock, do you have direction on this or additional questions?
No, thank you, Commissioner Logan and Mayor Protem. Dean, I know that in email I had shared, it was already a part of our anticipated conversations around the budget since it has a direct relationship to our loan portfolio. So that'll be part of it as well. The team last week met with a citizen who's been a part of the larger conversation for quite some time. So the team is ready, I believe, with finally the last pieces of those, those conversations. So unless you're in a great hurry as well and I would like to suggest that we lead into that with a summary and then put it into the budget as well. So we'd have it as an agenda item on an admin meeting. So we bring you all up to date. So that when you get into the budget conversation, you have more detail at that time.
Okay. Any additional commission discussion? Right. We will move on to report of the city attorney, City Attorney Jordan.
Mayor Protem, Commissioners, I do have one item to report tonight. I previously emailed you about. The city has been sued, a lawsuit brought against it by several property owners in town. Basically alleging that the city's street maintenance and improvement district assessment is illegal for two basis, two reasons that in their belief, the assessment is an unlawful tax because it conveys no benefit to their property. And then second, the district itself is unlawful because district funds were spent on unauthorized improvements. Those are the two major components of the, of the complaint. There is a more minor complaint about the city doesn't have the authority to create a citywide district that it has to create, you know, sub districts where the, the benefits are in their belief more specific to the property owners. MMIA, the city's self, self insurance risk retention pool has declined coverage that was not unexpected. Because the memorandum of coverage specifically excludes challenges regarding payment of taxes and assessments. So the city has retained Murray Moore Hank and Nathan Bilu from Jackson, Murdo and Grant, and the city is going to have to pay for the cost of that defense. They're already preparing an answer on behalf of the city, which is due next week. And they, we have already met, they're preparing a vigorous defense and we believe the contentions are without merit. I think it's a fairly big stretch to say there's no benefit to the properties, given the street work that is done. Not only to the streets adjacent to their property, but all the streets throughout town, which provide the service to get customers to and from their business. So the city will continue on with that defense. I will mention that and, and, and City Manager Harlow Shalk can provide more details, but this does provide a hiccup in terms of incurring debt with regard to street maintenance and improvement projects. So there will have to be some workarounds in terms of the budget to keep a couple of projects going for the next year or until this lawsuit is resolved.
There are questions or comments for the commission?
Mayor Protem, there's a lot of titles around here. Have you noticed that? I'll get used to it eventually. Feel like First Nations worked great, but maybe that's not protocol. Anyway, Mayor Protem. City Attorney. Is the MOU that we have with the League of Cities and Towns deficient or is is there a menu of things that we should have included? I'm just asking for future reference if maybe that's something that could be included with coverage from there. I just don't know.
Mayor Protem, Commissioner Fever, that it has, as far as I can remember, that's always been an exclusion in the memorandum of coverage. I suppose it's a discussion that could take place with the MMIA board as to whether they want to provide that coverage in the future. And, and they have, they've, you know, changed coverages, you know, over the years, added employment liability practice, land use decision liability coverage. But as far as I remember, under the general memorandum of coverage, payment of taxes and assessments has been excluded.
So that's excluded across the board. That's not just for the city of Helena.
Correct. Yep. All the members that are participating in MMIA's coverage. Yep.
Thank you. City Manager, if I might. Does the, if you will, the, the stay on certain projects include sidewalks?
Thank you, Commissioner Fever. Yes. As part of the update underneath the city manager, I anticipate having a conversation with you all about the number of initiatives that the city relies on the street assessment dollars to support. One of those, including the loan initiated by the commission at the end of the budget specific to Knight Street. There was a request that the city obtain a $1.3 billion loan against the street assessment in order to complete Knight Street. And that project is being evaluated among other dollars within the organization because we cannot take out a loan as a result of the, the suit.
Thank you.
I do have one question for city attorney. What, and you may not be able to answer this fully. What does the timeline of a lawsuit like this look like?
Could Mayor Protem could be several years. I, I am hopeful that we will be able to get at least some of the counts dismissed early on in the process, but even that is still several months away. Just based on district court scheduling and briefing, it could be a while.
Okay. Thank you. Does that conclude your report?
Sorry, Mayor Protem, yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to the report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and I thank you for your question, Commissioner Fever. It was a good tipping off point. You'll first, I want to congratulate our two new officers, Cedars and Harrison. Begrudgingly congratulate Joe Thomas, City Attorney Jordan, on his score that the League of Cities and Towns have definitely made. Kelly Lynch, their new director, did reach out and offered some condolences and felt very badly. And I am actually very thankful for Thomas to be there for us. I agree with you. Thomas's expertise is desperately needed across the state of Montana, and I really appreciated having him here and I don't want him to go, but I'm very grateful. He's going to be someone who's going to be advocating for all of us in the big picture. So Kelly, you still owe me. I'm not the person who will go for a beer though. So I think I did have a conversation about a potential policy discussion later that I will absolutely snag from them. His expertise. So congratulations, Thomas. Thank you for all your help. So the, tonight's agenda contains a lot of resolutions of issues over the years that have come up. Many from 2019 forward and the last year, Thomas and I and a number of members of the city team have really dedicated ourselves in resolving them. Our airport is one of those in the agreement. Another is the street assessments. You'll see it also on this conversation. One of the larger issues around the street assessment was whether or not the the federal government requirements specific to those who receive dollars and the levying those of those assessments by the city were, were allowed. And you'll see on the agenda, we are actually addressing that and removing from what has been a very long disagreement between the two organizations. And we are in agreement that this is important for the city of Helena. We are very grateful for the work of the airport and all the work they've been doing lately and to improve the access of our flight carrier and our carriers into, into Helena. It has a direct relationship to our economic activity and location. As far as safe drivers, I have shared to you that I have my own particular focus on safety of the safety of pedestrians and safety of those who are driving vehicles through our town this year. And that includes the safe routes to school conversation that we continue to have in specific projects, Rodney Street, Phase Two, Knight Street, those two projects were reliant upon loans. Now I do understand that our street team has and is looking in other ways to prioritize dollars so that we can complete the Rodney Street Phase Two. But how, we really will have to look at other ideas while we work on this lawsuit over the next year to two years. Specifically on Knight Street, we've been coming up with creative ideas. I also shared earlier that many times we're in conversations around neighborhood issues that don't necessarily apply citywide. And citywide, the commission often should be in conversations about things that support those initiatives and policy issues citywide. And having the neighborhood focused activities really reduces our ability to provide those larger picture conversation in the study that you all need from us. So the Knight Street item will also be added to our new volunteer coordinator. We have Dana Geary, who was brought on as part of our team this year. The commission approved the hiring of a halftime volunteer coordinator. And Ms. Geary is already starting, first off with our snowbuster program, but then also she'll be working with myself. Chief, interim chief petty, as well as a number of members from the streets team to localize a neighborhood issue. And that is at the Jefferson School. And with safe driving around that school. So we've already met with the principal and look forward to working with that as a pilot project to help improve pedestrian safety, but most importantly, to really focus in on what the safety issue is, and that is safe drivers. Our drivers are not safe currently. They are, as I'm sure many of you have observed, a lot of people nationally even are forgetting how to drive. A lot of us have just been COVID restricted. And also there's this additional interest in our community to walk to many locations. So the safety of those of our pedestrians are on the top of my list, and that includes the safe route to school Knight Street. So I look forward to having some more creative conversations with the community. I know that Commissioner Fever has requested a meeting with members of that neighborhood already, and I look forward to talking with them about some ideas to just start some safe routes ideas without having to make major engineered improvements, which is exciting too. New thought on how things can be managed with pedestrians and their safety when there are not sidewalks. So just wanted to make sure that even though that project may not happen, we are not walking away from the need to make that area safe for our students walking to school as well as the partnership that we need with our school district to get that work done. I know that much of the creativity of this team rests in having those conversations with a broader group in the neighborhoods and really listening to what they would like to see happen. Last, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to spend time in drafting out this, this team this Last, I just want to say, thank you for the opportunity to spend time in drafting out this this team this last year. The there have been several positions that were adopted in the budget that we simply could not find qualified individuals to complete. There was, and just like everyone else nationally, we've had a real difficult time bringing on important staff. So we look forward to having another conversation soon around funding and our salary system. So I appreciate all the conversations we've had so far in the administrative meeting. And I'll make sure to provide any other further updates on the two items from tonight in our next admin meeting. Thank you very much, Mayor Hotel. That concludes my update.
Thank you, City Manager Harlow Shock. Are there questions or additional comments from the commission? All right, seeing none, we will move on to communications from the Helena Citizens Council. I believe we have HCC Representative Denise Roth Barber.
Hello, can you all hear me now?
We can.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. I just want to announce that the HCC has a full slate. We, there is always 28 seats available and all 28 are now filled. And we have a new set of officers chairing the HCC. So you'll hear more from him in the next year or two is Cole Rosling. And then our vice chair is Dylan Klapmeyer, who's the outgoing chair. And our secretary is Michael Rooney and our treasurer is Nolan Harris. And at our meeting in January, we talked about the various positions on boards and committees that need to be filled. That and we are currently working on that. So that's my update.
Thank you, Ms. Barber. Are there questions or comments from the commission? Well, congratulations to all of the new HCC and returning reps. And also congratulations to the new executive team on the HCC. We are looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to regular items. The first regular item, A, consider a resolution clarifying that property was in the city of Helena that is not chargeable for any assessment by reason of state or federal law is exempt from the levying of the assessment. City Manager Harlow Shock, and I believe Finance Director Sheila Danielson and City Attorney Thomas Joden will be presenting this. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Dean, I will go ahead and turn it over to City Attorney Joden and Director Danielson. I already mentioned this is part of that larger picture of the assessments and the street assessments in relationship to the airport in particular. And the requirement that when they receive grants, we have to be cautious of the levying of specific assessments in that case. And I'll turn it over to City Attorney and Director Danielson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Commissioners. I'll just go over a brief history of the issue that the city and the airport have been struggling with for a couple of years now. An audit that the airport had done, and I believe it was 2018, 2019. Opined that the airport was violating federal revenue rev- sorry, federal revenue diversion regulations. And on that basis of the audit and council's advice, the airport elected and has not paid the city's assessments for 2019, 2020, and now 2021, or at least the first half of 2021. For the open space, the city's open space maintenance, urban forestry landfill monitoring, storm art utility districts and street maintenance and improvement district. The airport's concern was that their federal sources of funding could be jeopardized if they paid city levied assessments. Where the city couldn't demonstrate that the assessments reflected the value of the services provided to the airport. And thus would be in violation of those federal revenue diversion restrictions. City staff worked with the airport over those two years to try to find a resolution. Ultimately, after much effort and the help of outside counsel with expertise in the field of assessments and airport properties and FAA regulations. We conclude that the city is unable to meet that threshold, showing that the assessments levied by the city against the airport reflect the value of the services provided to the airport specifically. And so we recommend a resolution that you have in your packet, which would clarify that property that is not chargeable by reason of any federal law is exempt from the levying of the assessment. At this time, only the airport is the is the identified property that could fall under this, but we left it open ended in case there were other properties that had similar issues, but we do not expect or see any right now. This would also resolve the the two and a half years of delinquent taxes and authorize or gives legal support to the county clerk in recorder's office to cease whatever sort of delinquency shows on the airport's property and resolve the issue moving forward. So for for future years, there will not be the city assessments on the airport's property. However, we are working and staff is working on street maintenance methodology to assess the no title buildings that are on the airport property. Those are all the the commercial leases that the airport has. Working on a methodology to assess them, the street maintenance, especially the street maintenance assessment. They are, those nice no title buildings are already assessed. The other city district assessments. And so I expect that there will be an amelioration of the loss of revenue for this resolution by basically transferring the methodology from the airport itself to the the lessies of airport property, especially commercial users. And with that, I can answer any questions, but I would move to, I would recommend the commission move to approve a resolution clarifying that property within the city is not chargeable for any city assessment by reason of state or federal law is exempt from levying of the assessment.
Are there questions or comments from the commission?
Mayor Protem, if I may, City Attorney. Is it wise to include the state in this?
Mayor Protem, Commissioner Fever, I do not believe so. They are, the state is exempt from paying general taxes, but they are still obligated to pay assessments. And we're operating here under, at least from my perspective, a narrow federal aviation law, which precludes revenue diversion. So basically, what the goal of the the restriction is that local governments wouldn't tap airport revenues to fund non-airport needs. So basically, a cash cow for for city operations, municipal operations. I don't think that's the case here, but we can't make, I don't believe we can make the showing that the assessments provide that specific level of benefit that the FAA regulations require. And so the state isn't under those FAA regulations. State law requires them to pay the open space assessment, the street maintenance assessment at this time. And so state property would not be exempt under this resolution. And I don't, I wouldn't advise including them.
So a different question. The would this establish any kind of precedent for some other plaintiff to assert that we can't show that there's value in what we do when we assess them?
Mayor Protem, Commissioner Fever, I don't believe so. Right now, all we're aware of is the FAA regulations dealing with prohibiting revenue diversion. If there is a future issue, I think it would come under an analysis to be answered at that time, whether there is some state or federal law that somehow precludes them from an assessment.
Thank you.
Additional questions from the commission? I do have one question. You, thank you for mentioning it, then the work that you all are doing for the lessies that are on airport property. Will we have, or do we know, and this might be a question for Director Danielson, I'm not sure. Will we have that methodology ready to go by the time the budget comes around so that we can pass whatever resolution we need to in preparation for that?
I will turn that over to Commissioner or to Director Danielson, but I know the team would like to move faster. We're also very conscious of timing related to other activities. I'll turn that over to her, though, to answer.
Director Danielson?
Thank you, City Manager and Mayor Protem and Commission. Those assessments are, we're currently working as a team to review them and to come up with an assessment methodology that is is fair and equitable and definitely something that we would like to incorporate into the fiscal 23 budget.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, I think now's the time we will entertain public comment before we take a motion. Is there public comment on this item?
Mayor Protem, Dean, I see no hands raised online. There is no public comment on this item. No one in chambers appears to be here to make public comment.
Great. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Protem?
Commissioner Logan?
I would move to approve a resolution clarifying the property within the city of Helena that is not chargeable for any city assessment by reason of state or federal. Federal law is exempt from levying of the, from the levying of the assessment.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Before we move to roll call, is there any final comment from the commission? Okay, Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Commissioner Fever?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Protem, Dean?
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
We will now move on to regular item B. Move to approve the Aspen Park Number Two applicant's request for a 30 day working extension to the minor subdivision review period. Thus, moving the city's decision deadline from January 20th, 2022, to March 4th, 2022. What's like, City Manager Harlow Shock will introduce the item, followed up by Planner McConnell.
Yes, exactly. Thank you, Commissioner. Mayor Protem, Dean, I will go ahead and turn it over to Planner Two, Michael McConnell, to share the reasoning and the applicant's request for delay.
Mr. McConnell?
Mayor Protem Commissioners, thank you very much. Just wanted to start by also heaping some praise on Thomas. On behalf of all of us up here, thank you so much for all of your always thoughtful advice and counsel and good luck in your new position and all your, all your future endeavors. So thank you so much. With that, the reason I'm here is for the Aspen Park Number Two extension request. Just so we all know where we're talking about, this is the Mountain View Meadows development, large, generally residential development happening on the eastern edge of town. And you can see the Aspen Park Phase Two location is right in this area. This is the preliminary plat for the specific for the area noted on the on the previous map, creating two lots from about nine acres. And we are actually asking for a 50 working day extension on this because the zoning commission was canceled on February 8th, just due to some technical difficulties that we encountered the the day of the meeting. And this extension will accommodate a special session of the zoning commission on March 2nd. And then a a March 14th city commission meeting. So the the new motion is to move to approve the Aspen Park Number Two applicant's request for a 50 working day extension to the minor subdivision review period, moving the city's decision deadline from January 20th to April 1st, 2022. The applicant is not, was not able to come tonight. They're traveling at the moment. But I can answer any questions that the commissioners might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Is, are there any discussion or questions from the commission? Okay, is there any public comment on this agenda item?
Mayor Protem Commissioners, I have no hands raised, no written public comment, and no one in chambers.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Protem, I do, sorry, I do have one question. So in the packet, we have a recommended motion, and then with Mr. McConnell's motion in his presentation, it's a bit different. If I'm reading that correctly.
Mr. McConnell?
So, yes, are you speaking about the review period since the decision deadline?
Yeah, so in the, in the packet, it move, the recommended motion is to move the Aspen Park Number Two applicant's request for a 30 day working extension. And your presentation indicates a 50 day.
Yeah, and this was because the zoning commission was canceled on February, in February, just last week. The plan was to always take this to the zoning commission in February. But that didn't, didn't quite work out for us, so the special session for the zoning commission will happen March 2nd. So we had to up the, up the number of working days that we were requesting an extension. I included an email from the applicant in the packet. And I have another email requesting the 50 day extension versus the 30 day extension as well.
So I would make a motion, if that's okay. Move to approve the Aspen Park Number Two applicant's request for a 50 day working extension to the minor subdivision review period. Thus, moving the city's decision deadline from January 20, 2022, to April 1, 2022.
Sir, a second?
I'll second.
There any final commission discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fever?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Protem, Dean?
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to regular item C. Consider a resolution conditionally granting Wish Camper Development Partners, LLLP, to waiver, a waiver of $29,895.54 in building and development fees for Fire Tower Apartments located at 6 and 8 South Park Avenue. This is going to be presented by the City Manager Rachel Harashock and Housing Coordinator Ms. Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I will turn it over to our Housing Coordinator Snyder. I'll also first share to you that we appreciate the input from last week's meeting in preparation for tonight, so that many of the questions you might have asked are addressed. So thank you for that and turn it over to you. To Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Commissioners. So just to reiterate, we are all right, asking the commission to consider whether to approve or deny the application for development fee waivers for 6 and 8 South Park Avenue. And so again, to reiterate, that would be 44 units between the two buildings, all of which are at or below 60 or currently serve tenants who are at or below 60% area median income. And so the questions that we were asked to provide information for last week were two of them were about the rent alder fee waiver project. So one, the amount waived through that application. And then two, what conditions for continued affordability were required. And then just kind of, I think, a general question about area median income. So I'll go ahead and answer those. And then if there are other questions, we have Kim Mack, our Chief Building Official online, as well as Tyson O'Connell and more and more. Kim Mack, our Chief Building Official online, as well as Tyson O'Connell and more and more from Wish Camper. And so the amount we had waived for the Red Alder project was one hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents in building fees. And then ninety-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-five cents in, in water and wastewater fees for a total of two hundred and thirty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. And so the, the conditions that guaranteed affordability at that project were restrictive covenants that were required for the low income housing tax credit program. And, and I just, I guess, to go over an area median income that is determined by county. And so for a household of one, it's sixty percent area median income, that would be just under thirty, oh, I'm sorry, reading the wrong county. It would be just under thirty-seven thousand dollars, so thirty-six thousand dollars, ninety, thirty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars per year in income. And if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer. And then we also, like I said, have several other representatives here as well.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the commission or, or commission discussion?
Um, Mayor Pro Tem, I have a question that I, it may have been answered, but the audio was not as clean as I would have liked, but so let me ask again what I asked, I think, at the admin meeting. Is this the same or identical to what we provided Red Alder when we made a deal with them?
It is not identical. And, and so it, I mean, the biggest difference would be that Red Alder was a new construction, a new development, and this is a rehab project. So, very different set of fees involved and different just very different overall.
So to follow up on that, then there's no issue here, though, that we're discriminating against one property via another.
I, not that I know of, no, this is our only application currently on the table.
Mayor Pro Tem, if I may.
Because you're City Manager.
Thank you. Ms. Snyder, the program itself, is it managed also as part of a larger federal requirement? Or what is the basis for the distinction between a new development and rehabilitation with regard to these waivers?
Sure, that's a good question. I actually, I'm not sure that I can give you a good answer on that. I know that one of the large differences between Red Alder and this one would be that there was, you know, a huge amount of those fees were in system development fees, which aren't you know, aren't existing here, that we're building upon existing infrastructure. I'm not sure, Kim, if, Kim Mack, if you have any other input here.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners. From what I understand, with the fee waiver, it's not specific to new construction or to a rehab project. It is tied to the median income, the low, low income housing. And we, we certainly encourage the rehab of existing buildings to make them more usable, better, better safety features and things like that. So it, as far as the differences between new and existing, as far as the, the ordinance and how it reads, if it meets the conditions of the affordability, we would treat those the same as, as far as the conditions for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mack. Additional questions or comments?
Well, it may be a rehab, but it was a long time rehab. And of those of us who drive down the down of, what is it, Broadway and look right at that building every day, we can only conclude that's quite a project.
It is quite a project.
And I'm grateful that it has occurred. I think it is a, a significant improvement. And I hope that it maintains itself for years and years and years to come because it was looking pretty shabby before this rehabilitation took place. And I'm glad that we can help incentivize it. I hope that we have more opportunities to incentivize more properties that are run down in our city that just need to be rehabilitated to provide quality housing for our citizens at a low price.
Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, if I may.
Yes, Ms. Mack.
Um, in, in that particular project at eight, six and eight South Park, they were able to maintain the, the residents in the building during the construction, either moving them to different units. And then they rehab units at a, you know, one at a time or two at a time. So there wasn't a lot of displacement of the tenants during that project. The contractors worked around those tenants wonderfully to, to, to maintain that they could stay there while they were doing the construction. They worked really well with the existing tenants in that building.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I know this was one of the first votes that I took when I joined the commission and I'm, to, to put this ordinance in place. And I think that we've had a couple of really great examples and I, I like that it's kind of a diversity of examples now that we have to move forward with about what is actually possible and a way in which the city can truly support more, more housing and affordable housing in a manner that, that the committee, community truly needs. So if there is no additional discussion, I will entertain a motion. Actually, first, I will take public comment first. Sorry about that.
Um, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, I do have an individual, Tyson O'Connell, I believe he's involved in the project, if you allow him to speak.
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you Commissioners, and thank you, Ms. Mack. I just want to thank the city of Helena and all, all of you and a lot of other people for being so supportive of this project. You hit the nail on the head earlier when you said this is, a lot of work went on in this project and it ended up being a very, very hard project. We do rehabs all across the country. And this was a very difficult one. I grew up in Marysville, just, just up the road from here. So this is a building that's been on my radar for a long time. And, and we're really glad to be part of the rehabilitation of this project. And we have been blessed to work with a great building department and a great city council throughout this project. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Any additional public comment?
I see no other hands raised online, Mayor Pro Tem Dean, and we've received no additional public comment on this item in written form.
I will now entertain a motion.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Commissioner Logan.
I would move to approve a resolution conditionally granting Wish Camper Development Partners, L L L P, a waiver of twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-four cents in building and development fees for fire tower apartments located at six and eight South Park Avenue.
Sir, a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final commission discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fever.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Move on to our final item of the regular items, item D. Consider an interlocal agreement for the formation, authority, and administration of the Lewis and Clark County City County Board of Health with Lewis and Clark County and City of East Helena to recreate the Board of Health and create a local governing body. Looks like this is going to be presented by the City Manager and Special Projects Coordinator Amanda Opitz.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Dean. I'll turn it over to Coordinator, Special Projects Coordinator Opitz here in a second. I just wanted to correlate this to the twenty-twenty-one legislative session and House Bill two fifty-seven and one twenty-one, House Bill two five seven became effective in, on May seventh, twenty twenty-one. And it limits the powers and duties of the local Board of Health, which the city had previously been a part of with the county as well as East Town Helena. By adopting this local governing body, the city becomes in compliance with that new legislation. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Opitz for more details specific to how this relates to the county and what we've been doing to ensure alignment.
Thank you, Ms. Opitz.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. Briefly, I just also want to extend my gratitude to City Attorney Joden for his many years of service and his mentorship of me as a new member of the city's team over the last couple of years. So, thank you so much, Thomas. I won't go into too much detail tonight. City Manager Harlow Shock covered a lot of this, but before you, for your consideration this evening, is the interlocal agreement with Lewis and Clark County and the City of East Helena for the formation, authority, and administration of the Lewis and Clark County City County Board of Health through the creation of a quote, "local governing body." As Mayor Harlow Shock mentioned, this is a requirement of a city of the size of Helena that we do have a public health department. We can fulfill that obligation through mutual agreement with the county to merge healths, the Board of Health Services, which has been the arrangement since nineteen seventy-five. Mayor Harlow Shock mentioned both House Bills two fifty-seven and one twenty-one, which limited the powers and duties of the local Board of Health. Prior to those bills, the local Board of Health could adopt regulations. Since those have been passed, that obligation now falls to the quote, "local governing body." However, our existing interlocal agreement and the bylaws did not specify who or what that governing body would entail. So, over the, since those two bills has passed, we've had, we've brought to the commission several different options for how to move forward. Ultimately, it was the will of the commission to create a local governing body that included representation from the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, City of East Helena, as well as community experts, stakeholders, residents from the City of Helena and from Lewis and Clark County. So, the agreement that's before you tonight reflects that will. And it has already been signed and approved by the Lewis and Clark Board, Board of County Commissioners on December twenty-third and the Mayor of East Helena on December twenty-first. If you have any additional questions on the line, we have Public Health Officer Drenda Neiman as well as, I believe, Charles Lane from the County Commission, the Office of the Attorney's Office, thank you, the County Commission, as well as City Attorney Joden, who may be able to provide additional answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Opitz. Are there questions from the commission? Where's your fever?
I have a comment.
I bet I know what it is.
If it makes the legislature happy, then I'm for it. You know, we have a great county health board. And so the last legislature decided elected officials need to make decisions, which they're going to make, I'm certain, contingent upon the great advice from people who know better than elected officials about how we should, if you will, work with our medical emergencies. Anyway, it is before us. I support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Fever. Ms. Neiman, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm wondering if you have any comments before we move forward with the interlocal agreement?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. Amanda did a really great job with her presentation this evening. I do appreciate the support that we have at the Health Department received from City Commission throughout these past two years that have been quite difficult. I do believe that in the spirit of House Bill one twenty-one in particular, this interlocal agreement meets that spirit. And we will operationalize it to the best of our ability here in our jurisdiction to put the Board of Health and this governing body in partnership for the greatest good and for the greatest public health. So, those are my comments at this time, and I'm certainly happy to answer questions. And again, thank you all for your support and your dedicated efforts throughout this past couple of years as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? I will just add, I think, throughout the pandemic, this community more broadly has shown that we have been able to remain more or less pretty consistent amongst our governing bodies and really working together to support our Health Department that has fearlessly led us through the last two years, of which I'm very grateful for. And so we'll be supporting this tonight. Again, unfortunate that the legislature continues to put us in these type of positions, as Commissioner Fever has outlined many times already in just this meeting, but here we are. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move that the City Commission approve an interlocal agreement for the formation, authority, and administration of the Lewis and Clark County City, County Health, Board of Health with the Lewis and Clark County and City of East Helena to re, to recreate a Board of Health and create a local governing body.
Sir, a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem.
Oh, public comment. Thank you. Clearly, this is my first regular meeting, Jerry. Thank you. Is there any public comment?
Mayor Pro Tem, there are no hands raised online. I've received no written public comment on this matter and in chambers. There appears to be no one.
Thank you for keeping me on track. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fever.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Okay, moving on to public hearings. Public hearings, item A. Move to approve first passage of an ordinance amending City of Helena Ordinance Number three zero nine seven and amending the official zoning MAC for the City of Helena for zone change of CLM Commercial Light Manufacturing District, R O Residential Office District for lots thirty-three through forty of Block Five, Lot Six through twelve A of Block Four, Lots thirteen A through fifteen of Block Four, and Lots thirty-three through forty of Block Four. And from B two, General Commercial District to R O Residential Office District for lots twenty-nine through thirty-two of Block Four, all of which properties are in the Woodlawn Park Edition of the City of Helena, Montana. City Manager Harlow Shock and Planner Michael Alvarez will present this item. City Manager Harlow Shock.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Dean. These, this item, you'll recognize, we amend the zoning map as we complete annexations and as property owners request. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Planner Two Alvarez to share more around the requests from landowners. Thank you.
Mr. Alvarez.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. Sorry, it wasn't unmuted for a second. So, my item this evening is considering a zone change from CLM Commercial Light Manufacturing and B two, General Commercial to R O Residential Office for a property located in the Woodlawn Park Edition, also known as the Woodlawn Dunbar Neighborhood. I am Michael Alvarez, and I'm a planner in the Community Development Department. So, the city is proposing to change the zoning in the area to RO to better match the residential quality of the current use. The Zoning Commission recommended the change in the zoning for the CLM properties and on December 14th, 2021, and for the B2 property on January 11th, 20 of this year. The eight subject properties are on your map. They're highlighted and read there, seven of which are currently single dwelling units, single-family homes. And the eighth is a vacant lot whose property owner would like to move a single-family home onto. Little timeline of the applications here. On August 30, 2021, an application applied to rezone the vacant lot at 109 Willow Avenue from CLM to RO. After discussing the application with city staff, the applicant sought support from adjoining neighbors for a larger zone change. City staff held a neighborhood meeting at the county fairgrounds, seeking input from the greater neighborhood in November. The city staff then submitted an application to change the zoning of seven properties in the Woodlawn Dunbar Neighborhood from CLM to RO. The owner of the B2 property had recently acquired the property. Notification letters had been sent out to the previous property owner. They sort of found out about the zone change a little bit later. When they heard about it, they asked to join with the other properties in the zone change. The Zoning Commission had already heard the presentation about the original seven properties. So, the B2 property was heard at a later date. A little background in that neighborhood. The Woodlawn Dunbar Neighborhood was annexed into the city back in 2009. A zone change had been sought in that area for Block 5 lots 8 through 17, which are on the north side of the subject area, just above the red squares on your screen there. Those three RO properties. In, it was originally sought in 2010 and was denied in part because of the recency of the annexation at that time and the pre-zone and zoning in the area. Those properties resubmitted and had their zoning changed from CLM to RO two years later. So, they are RO currently. So, slide four here is Montana MCA Section 762304. And I'm going to go through these review criteria. A requires the, we look at the reasonable provision of adequate light and air. The adequate provision of light and air is secured in all zones using setbacks and restrictions on building height. B, CLM is expected to generate more trips than RO. That's using the IT standards and that we have for trip generation. I would take it with a grain of salt in, for this neighborhood. These lots are mid-block and there's little through traffic in the neighborhood. So, it is more likely that RO will actually create more trips than CLM here. The area is currently gravel roads and unimproved. The area is not going to be assessed for street improvements until after water and sewer assessments are done being paid. So, it will be in this unimproved state for a few more years here. C, the current zoning makes the current organic urban growth in that neighborhood non-conforming. And this change would remedy that. D, this change in zoning preserves one of the industries that is peculiar to this neighborhood, which is vehicle sales and repair, while also preserving the residential quality of the area. E, the properties would no longer be legal non-conforming in their current or intended use. The 2019 Helena Growth Policy Land Use Chapter and Future Land Use Map identifies this neighborhood Woodlawn Dunbar as mixed use. Properties to the east of the Wood, properties to the east of the Woodlawn Dunbar Neighborhood are similarly designated as mixed use. The county fairgrounds are to the west, designated as open space. And, and the growth policy also includes several goals and objectives that are applicable to the proposed zone change. Notably, our objective 12, which asks that we promote and maintain development of a diverse housing stock. And one of the points there is to provide housing for all residents. Objective 77, apply or revise zoning designations with careful consideration of factors, including the future land use mapping and compatibility with surrounding land uses. And objective 78, which is to encourage infill development on vacant and underutilized land within the city that harmonizes with the character of the existing neighborhoods. And want to reiterate that the lot in the, sort of in the, in the middle there is 109 Willow Avenue, right in the middle of all these properties. And that is a currently vacant lot. The Woodlawn Dunbar Neighborhood has a mix of commercial and residential uses within it. And the zoning reflects that. So, the neighborhood has three zoning types. Commercial Light Manufacturing, General Commercial B2, and Residential Office RO. Of, the majority of these properties are CLM. The intent of the CLM district is to provide for the community's commercial and light manufacturing needs. These uses generally need access to the city's transportation amenities and should be located to reduce adverse impacts upon residential neighborhoods in the city. And this is going to be a change to RO, Residential Office Districts, which provide for, are intended to provide for a compatible mix of higher-density residential development with professional and businesses, offices, and associated service uses. This is a area that the Future Land Use Map has designated as mixed use. The current land use of the properties in question is as residences. And the RO designation is the, is our zoning type that is residential, that offers the most commercial mixture of uses. And so, seven of the eight properties, like I said, are single dwelling units. And they are currently non-conforming with their, in the CLM district. 1125C in Helena City Code does not allow for a single dwelling units on the ground floor of, in a CLM district. And so, specifically, they're all non-conforming because of that clause or because of that piece of, because of that ordinance. Adjacent land uses. To the north, there are single and multi-unit dwellings. To the east, there's commercial and residential uses. To the south, commercial uses. To the west, commercial and residential uses. And like I said, one of the peculiar, and I use the word peculiar because that's the way it's cited in code, industries in the neighborhood is vehicle repair. And we do not currently have a zone type that allows for ground-level residential units and vehicle repair in city code. The intent of the zone change is to better match the zoning neighborhood to the existing units. So, the residential uses that are currently enjoyed there. And in consideration of the analysis performed in the staff report, the, the proposed zoning change is compatible with identified goals, objectives, and policies of the growth policy. So, 14 public comments were received representing 10 households in the neighborhood and one concerned party living outside of the neighborhood. All of the comments were, were, are available. And we're up, given to you. Comments were collected through the action of a subject property owner via survey at the neighborhood meeting and through correspondence with city staff. Eight of 14 commenters expressed support. Five of 14 expressed no concern or issue with the change. One of the 14 is in opposition. There was concern expressed in neighborhood meeting about residential multifamily being allowed. And written comment was received expressing concern with placing the placement of the residential district between two commercial zones on either, on Mitchell Avenue and Green Meadow Drive. Zoning Commission's recommendation was for approval of first passage of an ordinance amending the City Helena Ordinance Number 3097. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. Are there questions from the commission or commission discussion? Commissioner Logan?
Mayor Protem, a few. So, for Mr. Alvarez, if I may, the second slide that you showed us. Thank you. So, other than the red outlines on those eight lots, that is the existing zoning map. Is that correct?
Mayor Protem and Commissioners, that is correct.
Okay. Question for the city attorney. Is this, is this a matter that ex parte communication would be of a concern?
Mayor Protem, Commissioner Logan, no. Zoning is a legislative action.
So, I guess my next question would be relative to public engagement, either for the manager or, well, I guess I'll start with the manager. Can you describe the public engagement process, please?
Thank you, Commissioner Logan. Yes, the IAP2 is the process in which the city adopts a particular method of engagement. You'll find attached to this item in your packet, what was completed by the staff team as part of the engagement and communications outreach specific to this item. So, I will ask if Planner to Alvarez can specify more around the IAP2 and the methods of engagement utilized?
Okay, give me a moment. So, well, let me, let me just go through it step by step. So, the landowner at 109 Willow Avenue, which is in the middle of these properties, applied for a building permit and was denied because of 1125C in, in city code, not allowing a ground story, single dwelling unit in CLM zone. They then wanted to apply for a zone change because this property is wholly surrounded by CLM and the zone change would only have been to the benefit of a single resident. It was recommended that they engage to see if any of their neighbors wanted to also have a zone change. When it sort of became confirmed, confirmed that some of the other people wanted residential zoning in that neighborhood. I took it on to, or rather, city staff took it on to hold a neighborhood meeting that was noticed up at the fairgrounds in person. A survey was handed out and conducted at that time. And a number of households, or a number of property owners in the area expressed their interest in having the zone changed. The first zoning commission meeting that this was brought forward to, brought forward to, it was brought forward as a city, as a motion from the city, or as a, as a city proposal to the zoning commission. It was improperly noticed. I had the wrong zoom information on there. So, it was tabled and brought up the following month. And public comment was taken at that meeting. And then there was an opportunity for public comment again at the following zoning commission meeting. In between the two is when we took in the application from the eighth property owner. Since the original seven properties had already been heard by zoning commission, it needed to go on its own. And you're hearing them all together today for expediency's sake. Not quite sure. I apologize, Commissioner. Have I answered your question?
Yeah, I just quickly, if I could, just to correspond and kind of crosswalk some of the requirements that you described, Mr. Alvarez. First, you described the requirements of the zoning law and the public engagement required under the public hearing portions. The second part of the conversation you noted was that there were parts of that public requirement. I don't actually see your IAP2 sheet attached to this. So, I will note that is not a part of the packet unless I, it's incorporated in one of the documents. So, you'll have to excuse me. Well, no wonder you're, you're there. The last part is the, the expectation of the law. So, of those items, have you met the requirements of the law? And I think you described you did so. The portion that becomes difficult is that there was a notice. And it sounds like there was a second set of meetings that were put together. But those notices resulted in the support ultimately by the zoning commission in bringing this recommendation forward. Is there anything else you would like to summarize or add to that larger picture, Mr. Alvarez, in meeting the expectations of the law?
Thank you, City Commissioner. No, these were, they were all noticed. I would just say that the the, they were noticed in accordance with the law. And the original meeting at the fairgrounds was not a requirement by law, but a matter of public engagement.
Commissioner Logan?
Mayor Protem, just to comment. So, the reason I asked about the ex parte communication and the public process, I mean, I guess I'll start with, I'll be supporting this, this recommendation for, I guess, you know, with the zoning commission having approved this, the public comment that's been offered, that's in the packet. It seems to be very broadly supported by most neighbors. But relative to, I got a couple of calls today from, from nearby business owners that, that didn't know about this at all, was their claim. So, I understand this is the first reading. I would, I would hope that somehow we can reach those business owners, property owners in, in the interim between now and when we have a final, final reading of this. So, those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Logan. Any additional comments? Thank you, Commissioner Logan. Any additional comments from Commissioners? I do have uh, one question, Mr. Alvarez. You mentioned that um, part of this area was rezoned in what I think was two thousand twelve to R O. Do you know which lots those were?
I do. Uh, uh, thank you, Mayor Protem and Commissioners.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, that's uh, 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 block five, lots eight through seventeen of the Woodlawn Park Edition.
You happen to know on the map which ones those might be because I'm just unsure. And if we, i- if an email is, is better, um, this will come back to us if approved tonight. So that would also suffice.
So uh, Mayor Protem, uh, and Commissioners, uh, the, on this map, uh, the northern, the, the top gray property, the three orange properties, uh, to the, to the right there, to the east. Um, those are the three properties uh, that had their zone changed.
Okay, thank you. It's very helpful. Any other questions or comments from the commission? We will entertain public comment. Is there any public comment on this item?
Mayor Protem, Commissioners. Um, I have no hands raised online and no written public comment. Uh, it appears no one in chambers is here to make comment on this item.
We'll give about twenty more seconds of public comment and then move to a motion. Seeing no public comment, um, and if there is no additional discussion from the commission, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Protem.
Commissioner Reed.
I would move to approve first passage of an ordinance amending City of Helena Ordinance Number three zero nine seven and amending the official zoning map for the city of Helena for a zone change from C L M district to R O district for lots thirty-three through forty of block five, lot six through twelve A of block four, lots thirteen A through fifteen of block four and lots thirty-three through forty of block four. And from B two district to R O district for lots twenty-nine through thirty-two of block four, all of which properties are in the Woodlawn Park Edition of Helena.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Um, any final discussion from the commission? I do have one additional question, I think for Mr. Alvarez. Do you know if this should pass? Um, first passage, do you know when it would come back to the commission for final approval? Or City Manager Harlow Shock, whoever.
Uh, Mayor Protem and Commissioners. I had originally thought it was going to be able to come back for uh, March fourteenth, so in a month. I want to make sure that that uh, works for the agenda and, and other city staff because uh, some other things had um, got a little bit backed up with the zoning commission uh, the other night. Um, but I've, it's my intention to come back for March fourteenth.
Great, thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fever.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dean.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Okay, we will now move on to um, public communications. And maybe um, if we might be able to remove Mr. Alvarez's screen share. Excellent, thank you. Um, any final public comment on this or any other item? Any general public comment?
Okay, so Mayor Protem, I apologize. Um, I do have one um, written public comment that came in earlier in the meeting. It just uh, came in after the discussion had happened. So if I may, I, I read that into the record.
Please.
Uh, this is from Denise Barber regarding the question regarding the allocation of the marijuana tax. This is a quote, per the resolutions, fifty percent of the tax revenue would be retained by the county. Forty-five percent of the revenue would be apportioned to the municipalities within the county based on the ratio of their population to the total county population. And the remaining five percent of the revenue would go to the Montana Department of Revenue to offset the cost of administering the tax. And that is a quote from the Helena I R. That is all.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Barber. Okay. City Manager Harlow Shock, do you have any final notes before we adjourn?
No, uh, thank you, Mayor Protem. I do not. Thank you very much.
Any final comments from the commission?
Well, I forgot to say that I appreciate having a in-person live meeting. I don't know if the audience cares one way or the other because they could zoom in as they wish. And I'm grateful for a couple of folks who sat through the whole thing. So having, you know, if you will, some folks around is a good idea. But I just think it's a much more personal way to do business. And I hope that we can do this as often as possible. And I recognize it can't always be done. And there's a lot of convenience to Zoom. I get that. Uh, but I just like how the uh, interchange um, in person just works well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fever. Commissioner Logan.
Thank you, Commissioner Fever. I appreciate those comments. I heartily agree.
Thank you. Any final comments from the commission? Right, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.